I'll call the panel select board meeting to order on Thursday, July 31st at 7:00 PM for the agenda approval, approved with a minutes of 7:10-14. Warrants, mail. On a new business, Progress Partners referral to a music festival. Older business, we're going to talk about the resolutions to support the US Bike Route. And Walter Clark is here to talk about the dry fire hydrants. Sid Smithers is here to talk about the planning commission request to retain a planning consultant, planning grant. Road Foreman is here to talk about awarding the dump body and plow equipment bid in Blacktop and requests some other things to do with the road. We also are going to talk about the safety policy for off-hour staff that come in on off-hours. And then we're going to have personnel employee evaluations and talk about pay raises and stuff at the end of that. What's your pleasure?
Move to accept the agenda.
Second. Anything to be added? Okay, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Approved with a minutes of 7:10-14?
It's almost second.
Any discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Counts payable ending 7:18-14 in the amount of nineteen thousand eighty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. Counts payable ending 7:25-14 in the amount of twenty-four thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty-five dollars and thirty-three cents. This one, the largest share of it is going towards the Blue Cross Blue Shield, Afflex and insurances. That's why that one's higher than the last count payable. Payroll ending 8:114 in the amount of seven thousand ninety-nine dollars and fifty-seven Counts payable ending 8:0114 in the amount of forty-eight thousand eight-hundred-and-sixty, yeah, forty-eight thousand six-hundred-and-eighty-five dollars and thirty-eight cents, which town property cash flow insurance was twenty-eight thousand of that, and workman comp insurance was eleven thousand, so basically you're looking at thirty-nine thousand of it right there. Panel payroll, check warrant report ending 7:25-14 in the amount of eight thousand eight-hundred-and-twenty-five dollars and ninety-seven cents. Payroll report ending 7:18-14 in the amount of eighty thousand three-hundred-and-sixteen dollars and seventy-five cents. That's your warrants and payroll, guys. What's your pleasure?
Move to accepting.
Second. Any discussion on any of them? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
We have a letter from a concerned citizen to do with dogs on Lincoln Street, of which they're talking about the dogs that are running about and creating various problems, everything from property damage to concerns of personal damage. We also have a letter in response from our animal control officer who indicates the steps she has taken, but she has a question for us to do with responsibility of the owners of the rental property for their rules and policy. Who is responsible for that? And what are those rules and policies in verdict trailer park? And what is the town legal obligation at trailer park as far as canine issues go? I can take a stab at this. Any other board member wishes to take a stab? Basically, we have a policy that talks about dogs and what the dog policy is, the control, animal control officer is. Personal people have on their personal rental properties is between them and their tenant. The town can't enforce someone else's policy. We can only enforce our own. Now, if you disagree, you can...
I think that's in right in somewheres.
The policy is...
Am I correct?
The dog ordinance.
Somewhere is.
Yeah, there's a dog ordinance.
The ordinance, correct?
Correct.
Well, follow it, whatever that is.
That's what I... Okay, but that's...
All right.
So I would just like to send the dog ordinance policy to our animal control officer. She doesn't have it already, so she understands that we have no...
She has a working document.
Yeah, well, and add the answer that we can't enforce what property owner's rules are.
She just wants to hear that so that better helps her do her job.
Well, I've said it. Is the board in agreement with that?
Yes, I am.
Mm-hmm. Yep. How about the phone deal?
Yes, she makes a request.
As long as you're reading.
Well, I'm glad you brought that up because I missed it. Yeah, her personal phone, yeah, last she, if I flip the page, she's talking about her personal phone and the amount of use it's getting in. People have been complaining because it's full. I would say we do the same as we do with other personnel. Let's get her a cellphone. Put it on the rack, put it with the rest of them. Is the board in agreement with that?
Mm-hmm. I am.
That way there, she has it on her. If they can reach her, it's not like you gotta leave a message.
How many cellphones do we have right now?
One for the transfer station.
Casey has one.
Four.
Darcy and those guys, so, yeah, we have a number. So the board in agreement with that?
Yeah.
Okay, Linda, could you set that up and see that she gets one? Thank you. Okay. Thanks, Ronnie. I would've missed that.
I'll keep you on your toes.
But I have them. Okay. After that, I guess. We have a request from the town office committee. They put their report here, what they've done so far. All the members have seen it. And there's been a request from the engineering firm that they've hired, a consulting firm, for, says with a consulting cap of five hundred dollars, they wish to basically hire an engineer. Let me see if I can find this, structural engineer to overview what they've done so far. What's your pleasure? You wish to move to let them have that money so they can move forward with this study?
Bring me up to speed on this. A structural engineer for something that isn't built yet?
No, it's for part of the design work that they're doing. They've, in this thing, there's a, they show some design, and he just basically wants to make sure that a structural engineer looks at the design and says some of the things they can do and can't do, or what they need to do to modify. They have an architectural engineer now, is what they have. So now they're looking for the structural engineer.
They must've realized they needed that when they came and told us they wanted sixty-five-hundred or whatever it was, or seventy-five-hundred to do this thing. Why are they coming back now? Need a construction, you know, you need somebody to tell you how to construct it, apparently.
Well, somewhere near...
That's my...
It sounds like they're getting close to sending out RFPs. I think before they do that, they want to make sure they have their bases covered to...
Well, I think our concern would be, if there's any, is if we accept their drawings, that means we accepted it.
Oh, the drawings that's there today?
Yeah, no, if we accept their job, that means we accept it. And if we spend five hundred bucks, the way I understand it, I don't know if somebody else was talking, I mean, I don't understand it, but I would guess it is, is more or less to protect us more than them.
I think...
Because once we take it, guess what? I'm afraid it's ours.
Well, I think you're right. I think you're in the right direction, Henry.
It might be. Okay, I'm not sure, so please.
Well, no, I think, well, I think you're leaning in the right direction. Basically, if everybody has looked at the drawings and if you're in agreement with what you've seen, they're basically saying, okay, if you agree with what you're seeing, now let's hire the structural engineer so he can then work on what you've seen to see if it's appropriate structurally how they have to build this. Now, I don't know if everybody has looked at these drawings that are here.
Well, I know, there's a whole lot of things going on in building nowadays, you know. We've got tornadoes now that we never had before. We've got floods that we never had before.
Well, you've got code requirements that are much different.
There's all, you know, spanned, everything is, you know, before you had a two-by-four with two-by-four, and now it's inch and a half by three and a half, and it goes on and on and on and on. I don't know what to believe.
Well, here's the question. You've already got sixty-five-hundred dollars invested in the design part of this, maybe not all of it yet because they're still working on it. But the bottom line is you've approved that as a board, and now they're asking for, you know, up to five hundred dollars. You know, I guess, the caveat I would have is that I have no problem with having a structural engineer come in and look at this and see what's going on with the design. I think, me personally, from what I've seen of this design, there's, I have questions about the design, and I want to make sure that I'm not approving the design that I see in front of me. But I'm okay with a structural engineer getting involved in that design work.
Well, it's going to answer your question, isn't it? I mean, I hope.
Yeah. Well, at some point, we'll probably have a joint meeting with these guys and go over this design and go from there.
I told you earlier, don't get me talking about any of this stuff here. Go on and on and on.
Well, I like the outside, I'll be quite frank with you, I like the outside design of this building. It's, some of the issues with the office spaces inside is where I still have questions and maybe that can be all straightened.
Would that be a benefit to the town and panel, do we think, for five hundred dollars?
Oh, I think so. I think the structural.
Okay, all right. I'll move to accept that, if you really think so, okay?
Yeah, I think structural engineer is worth it, to look at it. Okay, anybody else have any other comments? I have the motion. Ronnie, you got anything to say on this?
No, I was just puzzled why somebody would give you a price to design something and they wouldn't have that figured in. Apparently, they knew they need a structural engineer, so why didn't they just figure that? That's the only point I made.
Yeah.
I know if we, if they didn't figure it in, all it is is another added cost, that's all, which is fine. We already got sixty-five-hundred, if it's going to be seven thousand, well, we're going to spend it.
It's not five hundred bucks.
If I ever bid a job, I'd bid the whole job. I don't bid pieces of it. And then turn around and say, well, I gotta get a bid from somebody else. That's only my opinion. Of course, I've been around a long time, I'm not the new generation.
I agree with Ronnie. But that, but as far as spending the extra five hundred dollars, I just want, make a note of that, that, look at, you hired somebody to do a job, they were supposed to give us a plan, apparently they were, this, the way I understood it when they talked before, they were going to design something, and they were going to tell us how much it would cost. That's what I understood.
Let me read what it says. "I want to emphasize that our role is only advisory. As with doctors, patients, the town is free to choose their course. However, we believe it is in the town's best interest to have a structural engineer involved under the terms of our agreement as noted below." And I don't have anything below other than the, where they talk to Frank here, and it talks about the five hundred, not to exceed five hundred bucks, which I think is more than reasonable. They're just looking for information for the design to see if it's structurally right.
Well, they are architects, aren't they?
Yes.
Um, I don't know, too many architects that design a building and scratch their head and go, gee, I don't know, maybe we better ask this guy if it works. You know, if they're licensed architects, I think the onus is on them, and I think the onus is on them if they want to hire a structural engineer to say, hey, is this okay? Is this, is this going to work? I think it's on them, not the taxpayer.
"Structural engineer can offer important assistance in evaluating costs on various structural systems we want to use." That's what they're asking for. Okay, well, I have the motion. I'll call the motion. All those in favor say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Thank you, guys. I say aye. For the five hundred bucks, it's worth doing it. Okay.
It's just the principle of the thing. I don't care if it was five thousand.
I know, I know. Rather than stop it in its tracks.
Of course, we don't have any principles anymore. I forgot.
I'm running out of toes.
So am I.
I know. Okay, pending request for extension time for the file for the green list, when you're talking about running out of time. A letter has come back from the state of Vermont Department of Taxes. "After careful consideration, the division has approved your joint request for a second extension of time to file for your green list. The division will not approve any further extension at the deadline to file your green list. The timely filing of the green list is an integral element of the statewide education funding system as presented presently constructed." It goes on. And then it cites some of the statutes. And one of the things they're concerned with is if the clerk or legislative body fails without good cause, as determined by the commissioner, to transmit the green list data of the tax at in a timely manner and in a format required by the director, the commission shall notify the Secretary of Transportation, Secretary of Education, who shall withhold all general and other aid payments owing to the municipality until the green list information is filed as required by the director under subsection B of this section. Federal funds are exempt from withholding if either the secretary or commissioner has an opinion of counsel that withholding would be a violation of federal law." So one of the things is, is to get this done because you don't get your...
With it.
It doesn't give, I remember the extension.
Yes, we need to get it to Department of Taxes by August 15th.
As I, August 15th is our deadline. Okay?
Do we have enough data as to where we are right now? Is there anything in there, any correspondence?
No. There's some requests to the clerk and others to do some things, so, don't know what the status is. I did speak to our clerk last Monday, and she said she was trying to get some help, so.
Okay.
Okay, we have a letter from Mr. Shields to do with the tree falling in the house situation. Still with his request. This has been handed into our insurance?
Yes.
Okay, good. The other thing that he talked about was that he had talked to Green Mountain Power, that they would come and look at where the power lines and stuff run and trim the trees where necessary, with no charge to the municipality for that. We probably should contact Green Mountain Power because the power lines that run through our trees out here up front. If the board's in agreement, I would ask Linda to do that and...
What are we doing about the tree itself?
It is, it is on our property.
Mm-hmm.
It is pretty well damaged. You had somebody look at it, Jason?
No, I spoke with Dave Dentz about it.
He's our tree warden, correct?
And he has looked at it.
Okay, so, we're on the road.
And what did he say?
He's saying that, you know, the dead part of the tree, the hazardous part of the tree is now gone.
So the tree doesn't have to go down?
Well, he didn't say that, but the danger part was...
There's nothing that's going to fall over today. The question is, is how much rain gets in the middle and how long it will take to rot out?
That's what I'm saying, do we...
Is that a motion to take it down now?
Yes, I'm going to make a motion to...
Have it removed?
To have that tree removed.
Second. You got a second?
Second.
Okay, any further discussion on that?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Um, I don't have any problem taking the tree down. I want, we have a tree warden. I want the tree warden to make a statement on it before I vote for it.
Okay.
I think that's a good policy. I mean, why would you have a tree warden?
I think we had that.
We had Dentz, we had Dentz look at it.
He looked at it and said the diseased part of the tree is down.
Well, that's hearsay.
I believe Jason, but, okay.
Well, it's hearsay. It's, it's...
I know, I know. Any, any other, anybody else have any comment?
Take it down, that's fine with me. If you want to take down a tree, take the tree down.
I'm going to call the vote, and we'll see, see if we leave it up or take it down. You've all heard Henry's remark. All those in favor taking it down, say aye.
Aye.
He said aye. Those nays?
Nay.
Abstain? You're a nay? Okay. That's where that is. Comes down.
Do we have...
We abstain?
I, I, I make, what's, yeah, I abstain from voting.
Do we have to get bids on that?
I would say that's...
I would think we would have to put that out to bid.
It's going to how much it is. I don't know, you're right, it's based on where the cost is.
So, I think we should put that out to bid.
Okay, if Linda would do that, that'd be fine. And during that process, we can have somebody look at the rest of the trees out there at the same time.
Isn't Dave Dentz, the guy that usually takes our trees down?
Yes, it is.
We could ask him what the cost is to start with. If it isn't over our five thousand dollars, if we like the guy, we probably ought to let him take it down.
Is that a motion that if...
That's a motion.
Okay, and if it isn't, and if it isn't over the what we have required to go to bid?
That's right. Then we just, just go ahead and have him cut it down.
All right, you got a second? You got a second to that?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor say aye to that?
Aye.
Aye.
You abstain. Okay, and I abstain. So you have your three ayes. Okay, and if, if it happens to be over that, Linda, let's write up a bid and just go out with it. Okay, and board's in agreement with that?
Mm-hmm.
We have a concerned citizen who had written to us earlier about ATV use and fireworks. She has written a letter talking about how the ATV use has improved, and there's only, seems to be one neighbor that really is creating the problem, but the rest, and she was thankful that that was taken care of. And she has gone on to send us a letter to do with a neighbor and a neighbor concern. And I gave this letter to our constable, who recommended that also a copy be sent to the state police. It was to do with personal liability or insurance, and also bodily harm maybe to the individual. And then she sent a second letter that was to do with the fireworks that have been going on in her area, and she just wanted us to be aware of all the dates and see what we could do about that. And I would say, again, we supply that to the constable, and he can go from there. Okay, our road foreman has sent us a notice that we have had numerous signs missing, taking from around town. I won't read them all off, but there's one, two, three, four, five, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, and more. It's a large...
Well, one more night isn't over.
It's as many of them. So, anybody happen to see anybody around our town road signs, playing with them, moving and so forth, please take down the license plate and notify our constable.
Is our constable aware of it?
Yes.
Yes.
And basically, be aware that this costs you money. When we cost the town, it costs you. So if you see somebody, let us know.
Yep, if you see a wheeler, give me a call.
Yeah.
Mine was stolen.
They see a lot of wheelers. What was the color of your wheel?
It was a Honda.
A Honda.
There was a Honda.
Yep. Okay, and we have a letter from our supervisor at the transfer station for a meeting in August 6th, which is going to talk about this swipe template available, review current facilities, and discuss the various price ordinance and other things to do with this. The VCRC also talking about a meeting to talk about material and the management of. And we've also got a sample ordinance for municipalities to do with the variable price rate ordinance and so forth, to do with all this change in the recycling law. There's a lot here for us to read. I would recommend that the board, I don't know if we have a copy of this or not, but we probably should take time and look at this. I assume Hap's working on one of these for our municipality, or is he just...
I think most of this is informational for tonight.
And he'll come back and talk to us about it?
I'll make sure I get some copies for you for the next meeting.
Yeah, just so we can look.
If you came in today.
Yeah, because it's...
Do you have his bear issue?
Yeah, we have a bear issue. Let me put that on here.
Yeah, it's in there.
Got to read those last pages. No, I can't see it.
That was a separate one.
Signs.
I didn't read it somewhere in one of them.
Somewhere.
It could be attached.
Somewhere in the mess.
Yeah, it's going to say it could be attached. They got paper clips on these things, so it could be. Let me take them apart and make sure they don't do anything but what we're supposed to have in them. Okay, but we can talk about it. There's a bear situation going on over at the transfer station, and our supervisor has been in touch with Gay Morton, and they're talking about at this time taking in, putting up electric fence. Is that, Ronnie, you know more about this than I do. Go ahead.
He got the materials to put up electric fence, encase them two dumpsters where they'd have food products, garbage, so. And he fixed the door so that shuts down, so they'll just have to put the, put it up and take it down on the days the dump is open. I'm pretty sure it'll keep the bears out, and then, and also, because he got the one that the warden told him to get, six jewels or something.
Yeah, they had it attached to another one.
There you go. You make me speak about it, and then you read it.
No, I'm not going to read it. Go ahead. You said you got...
I'm all done, I'm all done.
I think you've covered it pretty well from what I can see. So, did he say when, when he's putting up the fence right?
Friday. Said it'd be up Friday afternoon.
Bears.
Bears.
Okay, I thought Friday.
And they were talking...
Big ride.
Cheap fence, electric cheap fence, okay, good.
Yeah, so, basically, basically with the statutes, with the statutes that are out there today, you have to take every measure possible to make sure that the animal is not harmed.
Well, that's what they do anyway. They put up electric fence around beehives, et cetera, so, yeah, good enough.
Okay, and we'll see, and we'll see if that works.
Makes sense, yeah.
Has this been going on for any length of time, or is it just...
It's going on for at least three weeks.
Well, that's where the big bears come from. These bears in the state got shot right over that way.
Did it? Well, they get well fed.
Right?
Jesus.
Yeah, you're right.
All right, that's the mail, folks. Okay, under new business, Progress Partners. You guys come up and introduce yourself, or make sure you can stand up if someone introduces you. I am Nelson Brownell, Chair of the Select Board.
Jason Olansky.
That's Henry Stromweier. He said he wasn't going to speak much tonight.
Rich Rider.
I'm busy.
Okay.
I'm Linda Schrepper.
Linda. My name is Stephen Solar. I'm the managing partner for Progress Partners, and I'm the majority owner of the company now. What I'm here to ask for is an endorsement from the Board of Selectmen to allow us to have entertainment festivals next year, essentially to use the facility the way it had originally intended to be used. That endorsement will allow us to go to various state agencies, as well as deal with some of the local agencies, community agencies, as well as the regional agencies, so that we can get all the permits in place to have the festival. And that's one of the requirements that they put in front of us. Additionally, we're looking at other uses within the building. One of them would be an agricultural use, something similar to a hydroponic facility for growing tomatoes. We have a lot of space there, and we want to try to utilize that space to the best of its abilities. One of the benefits behind having this activity take place is that we're going to try to create some jobs in the community. One of the efforts that we're going to put forward is to try to coordinate with local businesses and try to source most of the activities that we do with local businesses. In fact, one of the guys that is here with us today has spent quite a bit of time talking to local businesses that might be involved with these festivals that hopefully will occur next summer. We'll also have opportunities for local craftsmen to not only sell their wares, but to showcase We'll also have opportunities for local craftsmen to not only sell their wares, but to showcase what it is that they've got. And third, we wanna have an outreach program to local community organizations so that they can also promote themselves as we have people come to these events. As we fine tune things, right now it's in its infancy. We have a lot of stuff ahead of us to do, a lot of planning that we have to do. We'll come periodic, come back periodically to the board and update you on where we are, what's happening, as well as what progress we're, we're seeing taking place. Uh, I will tell you that it's somewhat of a highly speculative venture. Uh, we've got a long road ahead of us. We've got a lot of planning we have to do. Typically, the way the industry works is that you have to have all your ducks in a row by the end of the year. And then you go out and you find various agencies, groups that wanna come and have events at your, at your location. And you have to book them all by the end of February or March so that you can plan, have everything in place so that those events can take place. And you're probably looking at June, July, and August of 2015.
Are these, uh, one, one day events, two day events, three day events?
Um, you know, that's gonna range. It's probably gonna be two and three day events simply because of the cost of putting together these types of events. Uh, there's gonna be a fair amount of infrastructure cost involved. Uh, when you start looking at what it costs to do it, you really wanna try to amortize that out over as many days as you possibly can. At the end of the day, they gotta be profitable, 'cause if they're not gonna be profitable, they're not gonna happen.
I mean, we, we held Lollapalooza here a number of years ago. Are we talking about people, um, camping on premise? What are we talking, closing down the venue, people exiting? What, you know, could you, could you-
Right. It, uh, I'd say yes and no. We, we don't know. Uh, what we gotta do is figure out how big these events will be, what we can accommodate in terms of people that are gonna be there, whether or not we can have people camp on site, as well as how mu, how many hotel rooms there are in the area, how many other campsites exist in the area. That's part of the process that we're going through right now. But before we can really go too far, we needed to get the endorsement from you that says, yeah, we'd support this type of activity. And then we're gonna go to the state and they're gonna say, well, how much traffic is gonna come in? How's it gonna get processed? And they're also gonna ask the obvious question, where's everybody gonna stay? Uh, and that's where sort of there's no magic sauce. But we're gonna end up having to figure out what is the appropriate mix of camping onsite, camping offsite, hotel rooms that are available, so we can size these things appropriately. And that's, there, there's, I, I wish I could give you a straight answer, but I can't, 'cause I don't know. It's, it's a moving target frankly.
There, there's a state permitting process for anything this large to occur, which will require you to basically make sure all emergency services, traffic control, uh, medical, anything you need based on the size of the number of people. And that is online through the state and you'd have to go through that process. So that you're limited by their rules and regulations. The municipality itself, I guess the question I would ask is, uh, how long in the evening do you expect these things to last? You know, are we looking at something that's gonna go past midnight? Are we looking for something that goes to midnight? That sort of thing is where, because we have, we've had complaints-
Quality of life issues, I guess, to sum it up.
Uh, to, to answer that question, probably eleven wouldn't go past midnight. I don't think that would make sense from our perspective. We don't wanna be bad neighbors. We wanna be good neighbors. And I think eleven o'clock's probably appropriate. But again, when we get into the details of that, we'll probably come back to you and say, okay, here's what it looks like. This is what we're gonna do. But we certainly don't wanna do anything that's gonna impair the quality of life in the town. We wanna actually improve the quality of life in the town.
Let's throw out the, the hypothetical here, just, okay? Everything goes swimmingly. You get your permission and hold your event. What future do you see at Green Mountain Park? As far as, you know, using the main structure, utilizing what you have, updating, beautification, you know, making it, it, you know, something, I'm, I'm, I'm hoping this isn't gonna be a one or two year thing. That track has set idle for quite a long time. And everybody in town always drives by and say, gee, I wonder what's gonna happen to it. Is this something that you're gonna invest money in the property to, you know, to, to, to make it a viable, ongoing entity? Or is this a short term thing? Maybe you can't even answer that question at this point, but what are your goals?
It's, it's really a long term goal. Uh, the idea would be to have something that would reoccur every year so that this would become a destination like a lot of other destination locations. Uh, today, we spent a fair amount of time going through a variety of, um, options or visions, if you will, for how to utilize the property so that you could end up having this not just happen next year, but happen three, four, five, ten years down the road. One of the things about utilizing that track is that you've gotta start building a base. You've gotta have an event. And when you have an event and it's a successful event, people wanna come back next year to that event. So we wanna build upon successes. Uh, initially, we'll probably do something relatively small so that we can work through any of the issues that we need to work through and then expand it as appropriate. But to answer your question, this is really a long term vision. This is not a one shot deal. We're not looking to do one thing. We're looking to do multiple things. So it really is a long term vision. And it's gonna involve a fair amount of capital to invest in the building and into the facility. So it's not gonna be able to work on a one shot deal.
Do you see it as a more of a performing arts, an arts type facility? I guess is what, what I see. I hear the music and so forth, then you talk about people and their wares or their arts and so forth. You see it, uh, if, if the process works well and stuff, do you see it sort of becoming into that sort of thing? I think a SPAC or Sarah Toller, the, you know, different things that, that attract people, like you say. And in the year, during the summer, they have a lot of business and they do a lot of things. And of course, a lot of structures were built to support that over there over time. And it wasn't just SPAC that built the structures, it was other thing, other people investing in the community. And that's what, I guess, is that the sort of vision you see, something that becomes not only a growth for you, but a growth maybe for the community?
I don't know if I'd call it a performing arts center, 'cause that sort of puts in people's mind a certain type of building. I think it's gonna be a festival location. But it'll be a long term festival location. Um, you know, right now, it's the art of the possible. But you gotta start with something and you gotta attract people to it. And once they see a successful event, then that will breed other events. And I, I wish in three years, I'm sitting in front of you and we have fifteen things to choose from over the course of the year. But we don't have that today. And until we do something to do what I call is proof of concept, um, you really don't have anything. So I, I can't really tell you what it's gonna evolve into. I can tell you what we're trying to do. And as time goes on, sometime over the next four or five months, we're gonna come back to you with an update and as to, this is what it's gonna look like, here's how we got it formatted. And by the way, this is the impact to the community on jobs, on businesses that are gonna be involved in this. And we are actively out there looking and talking to businesses right now.
You have another question?
I do. Um, at that point, at that juncture, um, when all your ducks are in a row and you're ready for this, is that something for a public forum at that time to present it to the community?
That's, that's a pretty good question. I think there is an as of right zoning right for the property. Um, what we're looking for right now is an endorsement so that we can pursue all the things that are out there. If we were to spend several million dollars trying to put something together and then had to come back to the public and have a discussion before we could hire people to come in and perform, that may temper anybody's interest in investing in something like this. We're not interested in coming in and doing something that's not gonna work for the community. So, um, that's the best assurance I can give you. It's like, it's like any business that's out there. If you tell me, go build a business, but before you open the door, you gotta come in and we got to endorse whether you can do it. No one's gonna invest.
That's a fair answer.
Because that gives you too much of an unknown.
Henry, do you have a question?
Yes, I do. Well, number one, have you done anything with the state of Vermont yet?
No.
Good luck. Um, in the past, Green Mountain Race Track has had, uh, been, uh, run into a blocking spot, which you probably already know all this.
About that, no.
No matter whatever was, uh, presented there, come to a quick halt. And it was a state and not the town. Uh, but I'll tell ya, uh, right now, we're, you're very fortunate. We have a planning board here and we had a town representative here. Maybe they can put a little light on this to help us.
I'll do that in a minute. I wanna make sure the board asks the questions first.
Well, I'm just bringing that up so that, uh, okay.
Jason, do you have any?
I don't have any questions there.
Ronnie?
A lot of these things are musical events, so people won't be staying here for two, three days. Won't they come and go like they do with SPAC and places like that? They don't-
Some will come and go, but if, if you're gonna have a two day event, you'll most likely have people that'll stay. I mean, one of the things-
It'll be over a few days.
Yeah, we're looking at where, where you would put campers. So if they go out and they rent a camper, they'll stay there for the two or three days.
They, that's what they did at Lollapalooza. They, they camp right on premise and-
Well, they camped all over the place.
Yeah, they did.
They got permission to do it, which was fine.
And that one I was saying was like, if you have a- I think everybody remembers Lollapalooza and, um, I don't remember too many negative things from that, uh, whole venue. I thought it went off very well.
No, we support you.
Yeah.
I mean.
One, one other question. Well, a lot of the, these facilities that now put on these sort of things limit what people can bring in, their own alcohol and so forth and stuff. What, what do you feel your rules are gonna be in that sort of environment?
It would be the same.
So basically you, you, they need to buy on the premise or they don't?
That's correct.
Most of your festivals are that way today unless it's a motorcycle rally or something.
There's a festival going on right now at Falcon Ridge. It's, I've got a number of people that are, are there camping for the, for the three days. It's, it's a folk festival. So it's very similar to that type of-
And that's what you could have. You could have folk, you could have reggae, you could have, uh, who knows what, but, uh, okay, so it's, it's not limited to-
Correct. As I said, it's the art of the possible, so.
That, that brings me up another, another question. Have you done this anywhere else?
Myself personally, no. I've not been involved in the festival business, but I've been in the real estate business for over twenty-five years. So I understand risk and I understand what we're getting into. But to answer that question specifically, we are in discussions right now with people who have been doing this for twenty years. So they've done the promotions, they've done the event management. We're looking at this as-
You've got people working with you.
Absolutely. We, we're looking at this as the real estate arm that will then contract with the people who are the professionals that do it. And they won't do it unless they know the endorsement's in place and all the permits are in place. Then I can attract them to come in and do what they do. That's why when I come back to you, I'll come back and say, there's your promoter, here's your event manager, here's your public relations team. If you have any questions, ask them specifically. And by the way, here's their track record. And the guys we're talking to have twenty year track records.
Just, just one, just one other thing, uh, just for the heck of it. You talked about jobs. Just right off the top of your head, do you have any kind of number?
Just-
Um, you know, I, I wouldn't be able to be, begin to speculate on how many jobs would be there. But if we had a, a festival that had ten thousand people that were gonna show up, um, just think about how many food trucks-
Well, I understand that. I, I just wonder, that's all, because I know jobs are very, uh, isn't it?
Yeah.
It, it'll, it'll be a lot.
Of all people to ask.
Yeah. I lose mine in a few days.
You would go ahead and bring it up, okay?
But it is important. It's very important.
How do you think about running festivals?
I'm a DJ. I've run festivals for maybe a thousand.
A thousand buttered none.
That's right.
How's that?
Okay. Bill, you wanna go first?
Well, uh, one thing I thought you might be very helpful for people is you haven't quantified how many events in a summer. Are you talking, 'cause normally festivals in Vermont that we're used to for licensing are one offs. You know, Fish comes, they do a big thing in Coventry or so. Uh, I have no idea whether this is once a week, once a month, four, anyway. It might be very helpful if people understand that. And so like endorsements, uh, do you want an open endorsement? You want a qualified endorsement? You want, I mean, I think people don't wanna necessarily put you out on the limb where you have no controls at all. Obviously, it is a place that was designed for people to come there. Uh, they have come there successfully in the past and they probably come there in ways that other people think were unsuccessful in the past. And also just how, so that is an area I think would be good to know a little more quantification. And also it might be helpful to understand, uh, how this would be financed and who would cover those risks. And, uh, all the way down to those that you would rely on for it to be successful. Because I think the, there are good versions and bad versions of practically everything out there. So what are the protections against it being a unsuccessful, uh, bad version of it? I think that would be helpful for you to speak to that.
Sure. If I, if I could summarize your questions, you wanna know how's it gonna get financed? And, um, you wanna know how many festivals will take place over the course of a season?
I wanna know your business plan as, in general.
Well, um, okay, so, uh, the financing would be private. So we're not gonna come to the town of Pono and say, by the way, will you give us ten million dollars so we can throw festivals? Not that it will be ten million, we don't know. Um, but what will happen is it will be privately financed. As a result of it being privately financed, that's a private business plan and unfortunately I would not be able to share that with you. Regarding the number of festivals that would be out there, we're probably looking at three, maybe four next year. And the practical reality of it is you have to really do one or two in order to figure out what the issues may be, work out the kinks before you can actually do many more than that. We would wanna leave it open to four, but I don't think we would be able to do many more than four. Logistically, you've gotta set up a stage. You gotta break a stage down. You have to bring people in, you have to take people out. So you wouldn't be able to do this every week. Uh, you probably wouldn't have a permanent stage initially. But the goal would be to build a permanent stage, to make this a permanent location so that you could do multiple events over the course of a season. And it's gonna be outdoors, so that season's gonna be weather dependent.
Okay, it's outdoors?
Yes.
Three to four, so you're matching like every two weeks, every three weeks, every week?
Um, I, I don't know what the season's gonna be. That's gonna be a function of the promoters that come in and say, here's what the talent that is available in your marketplace look like. And here's what you're looking at in terms of a festival. So for example, if we were to do a reggae festival, we're all the reggae artists. And if they're all on the West Coast, we're not doing a reggae festival. So it's gonna be a function of where they are, where they're aggregating, and if you can bring them to the table. And we won't know the answer to that until February, March of next year. So realistically, four at most. I don't see many more than that next year simply because of the logistics that have to be put into place in order for you to get there. But the idea would be to have it grow, because the more festivals you have, the more money you're gonna make in the town, the more people are gonna come through.
So there's this three to four, uh, your goal would be ten thousand each?
We don't know what the number's gonna look like in, in terms of-
To make it work though.
To make it work, there's gonna be a number. I think ten thousand's probably gonna be the number to make it work.
As an estimate.
Right. And to put Lollapalooza into perspective, as I understand it, you had thirty-six thousand people at Lollapalooza in nineteen ninety-six.
I think if you'd done four Lollapaloozas, I think it would have been a, uh, challenge.
Again, we, we don't know yet. What we have to do is we've gotta go through that process and learn and figure out what works, what doesn't work, what venues work, what entertainment works. But again, I'm gonna defer to the promoter and the event managers to do that because that's their job. That's what they do.
Can you shed any light on what demographic, uh, the promoters are looking at?
It's gonna be a function of who the talent is. It's gonna be eighteen to eighty. I mean, it's, it, if there was a jazz festival, that's gonna be a very specific demographic that will probably gravitate to jazz. If you're gonna have reggae, you might have a different demographic. Um, you know, the best thing I could explain, and not that I'm gonna say this guy's gonna show up, but if Jimmy Buffett played here, that, that demographic's all over the map. You know, my, my mother would go see Jimmy Buffett as would my kids, so I can't really benchmark, you know, what the demographic is. It's gonna be a-
Are there models that people could say, oh, I think it's going to be something like the, is there particular festivals out there you would model yourself on?
At this point, I, I wouldn't be able to, 'cause again, we're asking for an endorsement so we can go out and do the planning so that we can come back with what we think will work. And then we'll come back to the board and say, this is what we're looking at doing next year.
Thank you for allowing me to ask a few questions.
Sure. Did I, did I answer your, did I answer your questions? I, I wanna make sure I, I answer your questions. I don't wanna-
No, I, I think I'm just trying to ask questions that, uh, there are a lot of people who are right now looking in the back of your head of the camera. But I'm trying to ask a few questions that would be the kinds of questions that they may have.
Right.
And I'm sure they will have a lot of questions of their own.
Sure.
Going forward.
Okay.
No question.
Uh, I, I don't know if we, if you know Bill. He's, uh, Bill Botso, he's our representative from the town.
State representative.
Okay.
I mean, I know the rest of you are, uh, but thank you.
Okay. This is Sid Smith. He's one of our planning board, actually the chair of the planning board.
I'd suggest if you have the time and inclination, it might be helpful to stop by the planning commission.
Okay.
I haven't, I've got the zoning bylaw. I took a quick look at it. I'm not prepared to venture any suggestions about what the situation might be in terms of zoning and other local permitting. You ought, you ought to touch base and see.
When does the planning board need?
First, uh, second Tuesday of the month.
Okay. Second or third. Are you guys on the second now? You used to do two, second and third. And then you just get away with the second and then you went to the third.
I think we're on the third, yeah.
Okay.
You give me an email address and I can send you our next meeting and several-
Sure, I'll, I'll give that to you.
Give me a card later.
Yeah, I'll give you what the email address would be, that would be great.
I'll send you a schedule of meetings for the next-
Great, and we'd like to get on your, on your next, um, agenda, if that's possible.
Certainly any added structures to the site would require a permit?
Not sure we would add any structures. We'd take some of the structures down.
But just so, any structural addition would have to-
The stage is the structure.
That's why when you said you might build a stage.
Well, that we would come to you for a permit on, but that would be a temporary structure. It would not be a permanent structure. We're not there yet. And once we know what's gonna happen, then we would come back to the town for a permanent structure.
In my opinion, it's just nice to see that something being utilized there, something going on there other than that, you know, that stagnant stigma that goes with Green Mountain Park. It, it, you know, um, you have nowhere to go but up if it's done right.
Right. Well, that's, that's the goal. To move our meeting along here a little bit, any more questions from the board? Any other questions from anybody else in the audience? And we thank for having such a large crowd tonight. We almost filled the building up. Okay, uh, with that, if I understand correctly, what you're looking for is the board's support for this sort of activity at the track. I, I would recommend the board, if they make such a motion in that direction, that the stipulation be that any town permitting- that the stipulation be that any town permitting required and state permitting required must be followed. And if they are-
Permitting and laws.
Right, yeah, state.
Permitting and laws and ordinances.
Right.
Okay, that's, I think that would cover all.
The board would support that, if that's what you wish to do. So I need, if that's true, then make a motion similar to that. Go ahead.
Just say shawoo.
The main thing is, I think, I think it's a great idea. I'm not really sure what I'm approving at the moment. You follow where I'm coming from?
That's why I said to make the motion as I-
Okay, so I really, in order to make, I wanna see it move forward. No question. I worked very hard fifteen years ago and twenty years ago on that racetrack down there. I put a lot of time in, a lot of effort, and that's why I said is, is have you touched, unless the state has changed, I hope so. No matter, any kind of whistle that would happen on that track, got shot down. And I think I'm saying it straight out, not making any, you know, any waves to discourage you. But at the same time, I want our people to know what's coming. So keep us informed. Now, how do you say that?
You just said it.
Okay, keep us informed, and I mean, keep us informed, and I'll move to move forward. I mean, I have no problem with moving forward, I just wanna make it very clear that I want our people to know what's happening.
Yeah, and I'll-
I think it's gonna, I think it's gonna be a plus.
And I'll say it differently. I'll say basically, our people have been very disappointed over a number of years.
That's my point, that was my point, not only mine, but-
But many people have been disappointed with the various startups and-
Failures.
They fall off the cliffs, so to speak.
Or beat off at one or the other.
And I understand what you're asking here might fall off the cliff too, and I think people out there need to be aware of that, because you have to do your research and come up with a plan and see if it's functional and so forth. But you basically don't wanna put that money forward and the effort forward without knowing that the town would approve or agree that this is a good function for the use of the track.
Correct.
And I think that's, that's what I'm saying is, that the board's gonna approve, it's not just going forward, but the type of function that you're recommending for the track. I think the board can move and make, make a decision of approval for that sort of function, as long as I stated, the various regulations and rules and statutes are met, that's all.
So I'll make that motion.
I'll second it. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Jenny Anderson.
Okay, thank you very much.
Let's go.
Okay, put that out of the way. Move on to the next thing. Resolution to support the US Bike Route. Has everybody had a chance to read this resolution?
Yes.
Hey, can I get a motion to approve?
I didn't.
You guys.
Thanks very much.
Okay, very good.
That's why you raised that long ride, you're staying up there and going home.
Take care.
Have a good day.
Thank you. Thank you very much. How's those knees working?
Knees are working better than yours.
You got a titanium leg, I got titanium knees.
More than better than your knee.
That's what he said.
Your knee, not knees.
Alright, okay. With that, I got a motion to approve, what's our discussion on this thing?
I'd wanna speak on it, that's all. I don't have any problem with the route, whatever route they wanna travel. I do have, I don't wanna get in the sign business. When we approve that, we're gonna take care of them's signs forever and ever.
I don't think so, I think it's their signs and all they asked is for us to put them up.
I understand.
I don't think it's our, if those signs should disappear, it's not our problem, it's not our sign.
Right in the resolution, it says, posting route signs when provided by Western New England Greenway for said bicycle route. They're gonna provide the signs, we will put them up, town agrees to put them up, says that posting of the route signs. But the bottom line is, the signs come from them, so if they're taken, they replace.
But we have to keep putting them up. What I'm saying is, if there's sign, put them up.
I know what you're saying.
My point is, my point is, is we're just taking on one more job. We can't, we gotta go put up our own signs, you just told us, we got twelve, thirteen of them to put up now. And I'm just saying, I have no problem with the route, but do we wanna put up signs for our own, our own people that wanna ride bikes? That's, I'm not against-
I'd like to say one thing on that too. You have a perfect right to ride down the road with a bicycle, no matter which road you want. I don't even wanna designate any bike route. That's my thought.
Okay.
I got no, I got no, I don't see any reason for it.
I'm all for it.
I don't think it's gonna become an issue.
I'm for it, and I think we should be, we should be putting them up on our signposts.
Well, we have a road permit here. I don't know how many signs will be here, did you have a problem with putting up a few more signs?
We've been putting up road ID signs left and right here, at least lately. I don't think there's gonna be that many, they're temporary. They have to plan the temporary.
Well, they're permanent, they'll be put up and they're left there.
You'll put them up, whatever's missing every year.
They were six by six.
Oh, it's not a big deal, it just is, it's time.
Well done.
And when we move on it, we do it forever.
Nelson?
This is what it's gonna look like.
There you go.
Something similar to that. Just, but it'll be Route seven instead of the other.
I thought we already agreed to accept it.
We did.
Okay.
Yeah, as the sign. I just wanna make sure that, Henry asked the question, I wanna know if a road permit was gonna have a major issue with this problem if he had to put up a few signs. I'm hearing him shake his head no over there.
Okay.
Alright, so with that said, any other discussion on this? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye. But I thought we voted on this already, didn't we?
No, no, we told him to go away. Write it out.
Okay, thank you, no mistake.
So I got two, those with nay?
I'm on nay.
There you go again. Aye.
Making the chairman vote.
Yes, boy, you should vote anyway. You spoke on the issue, we should vote.
Brutal. I voted, okay. Okay, Hap, our transfer station person came in and-
Something's lost in the mail.
This was supposed to be in the mail, so I'm gonna step back a little bit, guys, and go back to mail. Basically, this is a request for the board to authorize the town treasurer to obtain a bank letter and provide a check not to exceed fifty-five thousand dollars for the purpose of the possible purchase of a pre-owned backhoe. The backhoe will be at auction Saturday, August second, twenty fourteen. And with the board approval, Selectman Ron Bizan and Hap Percy will be in attendance to present and represent the town at that sale. What's your pleasure?
I'll move.
Give another, a second. Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye. We've done this once before, it's just doing it again.
It's just, that's a sample of what you did before.
Yeah, okay, yeah, that's fine. Okay, we can do it again.
Give them the number.
Yeah, it's forty last time, it's fifty-five this time. Okay, moving on. Walter Clark, dry fire hydrants. Sorry to keep you waiting so long.
Alright.
We just take a little time here.
Walter Clark in town.
I saw your little buggy, by the way.
What's that? No, your, your-
Your tri, your tricycle.
You got a cart, you got a cart to haul it around?
If you don't know me, my name's Walter Clark, I'm the fire chief here in town. I have some concerns about the dry hydrants in town and some other issues. I'll start with the one that's been the longest, which would be Barber's Pond. I was there again today looking at it. There's not much gravel left around it, and this was brought up three or four years ago to be fixed, and it never was addressed. I'd like to try to get the town, I work with the town to try to get it fixed, we need like a load of gravel and some rip raft around it. There's not much there now. It wouldn't take too many more rainstorms to have it wash away, and it's part of the understructure of the town. And I do go around and look at them, I paint them when they need painting, because that's part of the agreement with the state when they put them in. And I do clean up around, we have five of them that are working right now. And I try to keep track of most of them the best I can. And the other one would be the new one behind the school. I'm not really impressed by the way it's being taken care of. There's no weed whacking being done, there's nothing done on the backside of the fence. Me and Clint mowed it last year to make it look good, and this year it just doesn't look very well.
We're paying for that too, above and beyond to have that maintained.
Four times a year, I think, two, three times.
Four times a year.
Because-
It's only been built once, it's been done once.
Because there was nothing mowed on the other side of the fence, which needs to be done, that was, I think, an agreement, at least one pass on the other side of the fence.
Whatever.
Because we're gonna lose that fence already if it isn't taken care of.
Yeah, I'm just, I was waving my hand so people could hear you, and only one person talking.
So we're supposed to get it four times a year, didn't we agree that that would be June, July, August, September?
No.
I don't know if it specifically said months, but in the contract, it says four times a year. And I know it's been mowed once.
Okay, well, I'll get back, did you have any others you wanted to talk about?
Well, it's just, and the settlement pond for that one. I see it was dug out a little bit, but it wasn't dug out enough, because it's already full again. And that's already spilling into the pond. And we just spent fifteen thousand dollars on that pond last year, and we all know that, it's, and that's another part of the understructure that we need to try to make sure that pond doesn't fill in.
Any others?
Nope, we're still working on the one in North Pono that we talked about with Jason, Jason's working with the state. There's some issues with that, because there's not really enough water at the low time of season for that one. So we're working on other avenues, but we're trying to still get water for North Pono.
Okay, good. I'm gonna take the mowing around the school pond first from the board. You want us to notify Trevor?
Yeah, well, follow the bid, whatever that means. I move to follow, I move we notify him to follow the bid.
Okay, yeah, Linda, can you find out what the bid is, okay? If it is monthly, and if it isn't monthly, I'd go a little step farther in there, even though if it just says four times a year, let him know that we've been notified that the grass is very high on the inside, as well as he might be, and he should do both. Let him know right away.
This is a safety issue.
Yeah, not a problem.
This is the whole, I wanna work with the town on that, I don't wanna throw nobody under the bus, it's just, we need to keep this going, because it could be your house, my house, anybody's house.
Well, if the bid said every two or three months, I'd rather just say, it needs to be done, do it.
Well, Linda will handle that, find out what, right?
The bid reads four times, it doesn't specify what month, it just says four times.
So let's get him to just do it. Tell him that it's bad and we need to get it done.
I know that if it gets clipped right now, it'll stay dormant more.
Yeah, there was some done on the inside, but there's still a bunch on the backside and done around the fence.
Right now, I think it'll take you through for a longer period of time.
Yeah, if we all talk at once, nobody will hear us.
Okay, we did let the owner know that we would make that look good for her up there and everything, and right now, it really doesn't look that good. And if there's anything I can do on these hydrants, you know, I do, like I said, go around, and I paint them when they need painted, and that all comes out of my pocket.
Who's supposed to dig them out? Town crew?
The only one that really needs the settlement pond. And it was made when we did the pond last year, that the town would maintain it.
Okay, so the town's supposed to do it?
Yes.
Alright, then I think it's up to the department to notify the town whenever it needs it, and the town, she'll do it.
Okay, well, they did go in and take some out, but all the rain-
Bring your group and find out why.
Okay, we're talking about the settlement pond now.
That's what I'm talking about.
Ronnie, I don't know if you remember or not, last year, the town went into contract with the landowner over there. The town has a contract with the landowner to maintain that pond, not the fire department.
I'm fine with that, Jason.
Okay.
I just said, the man comes in here and says the settlement pond is, what you gotta do is you gotta tell somebody.
Okay.
Yeah, so we know-
And as long as he tells the town, I mean, if you wanna go through this long process, it's fine to come in there and talk to the Selectman. You could just tell the town and say, look.
We ain't getting the stuff we use, we're getting a lot of rain, and the settlement, I know it was dug out, but the settlement pond's filling back in again, it's already that far from the top again. I just don't wanna see the pond ruined, we spent so much time and money into that.
I think we should move right on it, that's all.
Yeah, the Select Board is in agreement that Casey should just go take a look, get it cleaned out.
Yeah.
Alright? You got a problem with that, Casey?
No, I know we don't. I can see where you're in there and put it over the bank, but it's all the rain we're getting. I know. Yeah, I was looking at it yesterday again.
Okay, the other one, the other one is Barber's Pond.
Right.
Rebel Need and-
Some rip raft along that bank, because actually, the water runs. That would work, Casey, but you can see where it runs right along the road and it goes right into that spot. Every bit of that.
You can take care of that?
Is it a case that we might have to purchase some rip raft?
No, big stones would work, I believe, wouldn't it, Jason? You've worked with this a lot, like-
I would say you'd probably have to buy-
To get the shot rock, because of the edges on it, it would win better.
Casey?
It wouldn't take a lot.
The board's in agreement, Casey, take care of it, and if we need rip raft, it can't be all that much for what we need there, for price-wise, just make it happen.
Okay, sounds good.
Board's in agreement, okay.
That's all I have, thank you.
Thank you. Thanks for bringing that up, those are very important issues.
See you, Tommy.
Sid? Sorry to keep you waiting.
Everybody waits their turn. We met with most of the members of the board of Selectmen on July fifteenth and presented planning missions. Goal of having the town commit to put up to seventeen thousand five hundred dollars into the planning process, which would enable us to retain a planning consultant. We intend to apply for a municipal planning grant, which would be a maximum of twenty thousand dollars. And having thought about the proposal we made to the four Selectmen who met with us, which was just commit right now to the seventeen thousand that it would take to hire this consultant, in addition to the twenty municipal planning grant. I think it would be, while I'd still like the board to commit to making up the balance of the contract price, which is thirty-seven thousand eight hundred dollars, I think you don't have to approve tonight raising that much money. I think you could appropriate five thousand dollars, which would enable us to start the process, get through the municipal planning grant application process, and if we get the municipal planning grant, then come up, then commit to the balance of it. But I would like a, just as the owner of the track wanted, an expression of enthusiasm for his proposal, I'd like an expression of enthusiasm for meeting the balance of the consultant's contract price to do this work. But I think it can be done in two stages. Five thousand dollars, now let us know that you're prepared to, if we get the municipal planning grant to come up with the balance, and so that we can start this process. It's important that the town do this, it's important the town do it right. We think we have the right consultant, they've worked with us before, they've done a good job for the town before. And we would urge the board of Selectmen to do it for the good of the municipality.
Question?
Sure.
So, so suppose we don't get the grant? We're gonna be looking for the, for the total?
No, if we don't get the grant, I don't think we can continue with the consultant, because that's a big part of it.
Okay.
I want, in essence, I want seed money to retain the consultant, to get the grant, to start the process. If we get the grant, I want the rest of the money to pay the consultant.
Anything else, Sid?
That's my only question.
I wanna hear from you.
You wanna hear from me?
Yeah, I want you to speak on it.
I'll come back, I'll come back.
Okay, then I'll talk a lot.
Sid, for the benefit of the constituents out there that may not know exactly what we're talking about here, what is the end result of this? What's the gain for the town of Pono?
Vermont statutes require that each town redo its municipal plan every five years to keep it fresh. The purpose of the municipal plan is to set goals and objectives for the town for the next five years in terms of planning, in terms of development, identifying areas that should be developed, identifying perhaps natural areas that shouldn't be developed, working on transportation, working on economic development. The town plan has thirteen separate elements in it, having to do with the health of the town going forward, and the statutes require that we address all thirteen in every municipal plan every five years. We're, we've just recently, we had a municipal plan about seven years ago, we, it was expiring- Where, we've just recently, we had a municipal plan about seven years ago, we, it was expiring. We asked the board of selectmen to approve it for another five years, so we're in essence, in year seven of what is a ten year plan, and it shouldn't be, we should be doing them every five years, the purpose of hiring a consultant is to help us go through the process of talking with the community, finding out what the community wants, guiding the community to some extent in public hearings and public presentations to, uh, educate the public as to what's needed in, in terms of economic development and other things for the town, and then come up with a town plan, which has to be ultimately approved by the legislative body, which is you, after a public hearing.
That answer your question?
Yep.
Anything else? Ronnie?
My question is, uh, this town got along very well. And, uh, we had a pretty good surge of development came in this town. In the seventies, early eighties, the reason they came, and these were working people, not just people coming in buying a huge tract of land or nothing, working people. Two, three acres, whatever, houses, they came here to escape regulation. They came here to get away from, most of them were from Massachusetts. You know, they came here, they, they got sick of Williams Town, they got sick of that, they wanted more freedom. See, and, and them days, back in them days, I mean, I worked in Massachusetts, I already gave this speech once before. I worked in Massachusetts and the people down there, they kept asking, why don't you move down here? I said, cause I live in the freedom state. I can do what I want, pretty much, and I kinda like that aspect. So, and I'm, and I'm sure now if the state, to follow that a little further, I don't know, but I'm, I'm, I have a feeling that if the state, uh, mandates this, if you don't do it, does the state give you a plan? Does the state have a plan for our development? See, I'm not, this town is spread out, this isn't like any other town as far as I'm concerned in, in the state. You go to Dorset, you got one little area, go to Manchester, it's cluttered right there, that's what you got. You come here, you got three little villages. That's what you got, actually it should be three little towns, if that's what you wanna talk about, Mennington's all one thing, they got a lot more people paying too. And they did have some industry, but they have nothing now. And I went to the planning board thing and I heard what some of the ideas were about sidewalks, recreation, stuff like that, you know? I don't see anybody walking. I don't see any real, if, if we're gonna change anything for the town, maybe we oughta do a little bit more law enforcement. That's what we need, more than the town plan. As far as I'm concerned, but that, that's my opinion.
I'll give my spiel on this. Really what you had, when you're looking at the state, what the state regulations would be if you didn't have a town plan, there's something called Act two fifty and Act two forty-eight, there's a lot of things that the municipality would have to go through every time somebody does something, it might not be the small buildings and structures they do, but you'd fall into the state regs that do with zoning, if you don't have any zoning you own in town. Would it be more free? Would people be able to put up more things? Of course. But there is state regulations if you were to go too far with that. The other thing, I guess what I would say is, the last time we went through this five year plan, and, uh, I was the one that worked with the consultant that they're recommend, recommending, and I do think that, uh, they're very capable and very versed in what they're doing, uh, we held numerous meetings with the public, and the public were invited and they put a lot of input into the plans, along with the regional commission and others. Uh, and we came out with a plan that our goal was mainly strongly to do with environmental, because of the environmental concerns we had at that time with sewage running in the rivers and the streams, and the school had problems and the rest, but that's where the key on the plan was, we had a major goal. We talked about economic, we talked about other things too in the plan, because there was, I don't think there was thirteen things then, but there was numerous things that the state required, now they require an economic, flood plain, there's, there's more things you have to address now in the plan than you did before, and that's part of updating this plan is bringing us up, so we meet all the requirements. The real thing is, is what's our goal with this town plan? Where's, where's our focus? I hear Ronnie say sidewalks and, and recreation, I think recreation's a good thing, I'm not sure if sidewalks is your primary goal that you're talking about in this new plan. Uh, I would hope it's economic development, tax relief of some sort. How do we make things happen in the town with a town plan, because it's really a guideline, which then leads into your bylaws and other things. But the courts look at the town plan as one of the key things when somebody tries a development. If your town plan is against it in an anti-way, you, you're not gonna get that through when you talk about dealing with the state. It makes it very tough, so when you're talking about a town plan, what do we want for our town, where do we wanna go and, and build this plan? Do we need it? Yes, we need a change, we, we need to get focused, the real thing is, we as a select board, because we have the final say, need to put strong input in to our planners, as they put input to us on what we really need in our town. And right now, I think there's a huge need for some sort of tax relief, and we better find a way to have some development for businesses and other things in town, and I, I don't care if they're small businesses, large businesses, but we need a business district, and we really don't have something that's zoned, we have commercial, but we don't have something that says business district or things like that, and I think those are the sort of things we need to bring to the board, planning board, and let them move forward on the town plan, it's just, but again, it, it needs to say what the plan, the real goal is, and then we can work at with this planner.
That's my, the planner, the, a principal function, not the principal function, but a principal function of an experienced planner is to do the outreach, to get, to understand what the town wants. So I think if you come to the public hearings and say what you wanna say, it'll all go in the record and it'll be all considered as part of what's gonna become the town plan. And I think that's true of everybody, and I think the board of selectmen has more to contribute, because you know more about the, the broader nature of the issues in town, uh, but everybody's invited to come, everybody's invited to speak their piece, and if everybody wants freedom, then that's, I guess, what the town plan's gonna have to say, if everybody wants it.
That's right, well Sid, I gotta reiterate one thing. I was on this board when they brought up the other plan. And for some reason, I very seldom miss a meeting, but I missed one. And it was the second meeting of the plan, and there they're looking at it. And they said, we gotta prove this, first of all, uh, I think the only selectman that was there was Nelson, that is here now, and myself. And I says, what's this? You can't have an animal in the village. A chicken, a rabbit, without coming in front of it, I said, we got four H, I know people that had a horse on half acre land, they never hurt nobody. They didn't have to have that half acre land feed that animal, they bought food for it. And I'm saying, this is the country, I don't want it to be the city, I don't want it, I can't afford it to be the city. But if a person's got, you know, a, a lot of an animal or something, I said, why can't they have it? Why is, is everybody gotta regulate everybody else's life? Is there such a thing, you know, in the old days they used to say, mind your own business, I'm all for that. If a person's got something and he isn't hurting me, I don't care if he's got chickens or he's got a horse over there, I could care less. See, he's not hurting, as long as he isn't hurting me, if that animal's coming over and causing damage, that's one thing. But as far as being in the village, I mean, uh, versus our, our one, or our, our two, and all this stuff, and making your plan, see, the trouble, Sid, is this, as far as I'm concerned, not enough people go to these meetings when they bring it in front of the town. You get the same group of people, you got about thirty-five people that come there, that's what's there, then people holler at me. You know, it's just like I had people holler at me about the bicycle thing. You people might think I'm off the wall, but I get people to talk to me.
Isn't the answer to that to, for you to encourage them to come to the meeting?
Well, that's what I'm trying to do right now, if anybody watches this show, I'm trying to tell them, look at it, you should come out, it's your town. Me, my, I'm putting it there gone, so it don't make no difference, but there is people here that, you know, want it to be to, so that they can reflect and say, you know what, this is the way it was when I started, it's good, I like it. I mean, the last select board, they said, we can't go back. If we make mistakes, we can't go back, I don't get that, if I make a mistake, I go back. And if people make mistakes, they should be able to go back, oh no, we gotta keep proceeding forward, you know? And there's always somebody against everything.
Forward, forward depends on what you consider forward.
That's right, that's right. But what I'm saying is, I was under the impression, this is what I heard, when you sent out that flyer, you didn't like the answers you got back. Because they were all from seniors or whatever, well, you know what, that's all we got left. Look around in the town.
Look around right here. I don't remember that. They didn't like the flyer. Yes, there was a questionnaire to send out, but I, I don't remember that any of the board saying they didn't like the answers or so forth, we took the answers and, and digested what was said on them. And that'll be part of the process of moving forward when you move on the plan and the rest, I assume. That, that, again, I'll get back to the fact that there are certain things within our town plan that definitely need to be addressed. And so we need to move forward, and I like, and I, and I wanna thank Sid for coming in and, and recommending that we go in steps. Go through the grant, see if we get the grant, and then go the rest of the way, because because of the money situation, I'd like us to, to, to move that way, because I think it, it stretches out and we can see where we are financially with some things.
I got one more comment to make though, cause I'm warmed up on this issue.
Not really.
He also said, you know, when I looked at that and addressed that thing, they said, this is a, a lot of things where I don't think there should be anything that's not, that isn't conditional. That's my fact, my word. You know, I don't see this, no, absolute no, like they had in that last one, no racetracks, we had about four of them. I know Green Mountain was defunct, but we had the, two, uh, tracks in the mountain, people riding motorcycles, been riding there for years, sanctioned races, stuff like that, track up here in Pownell Center, and they said, no racetracks, absolutely none. I think everything should have been conditional. If you come forward, it's just like a junkyard. I think I'm the only guy that had a junkyard in this town, legal. A long, long time ago, I applied for a permit, came in front of the board, and I said, what do you want, you want them all over town, or do you want them in one place? That was part of my speech, and I took them, I picked them up, no matter if they were whole or parts. Took them, all right? And I got a, 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 a permit, but this saying, no junkyard, no racetrack, no nothing, you know what? It's nice that we could all live in, in Eden, or Fairyland, or wherever the hell we're, we're looking at. But as far as I'm concerned, we, we should, and I won't be here, but the select board or anybody else, they should be able to look at these issues. You know, these people came in, they got an idea, you know there's gonna be people against that. There's gonna be a, a lot of them for it. But they, it should be, you know, talked over.
That's the purpose of this process.
And, and again, the, what Ronnie's referring to is a lot of the bylaws, and in order to update bylaws, one of the things you need is an active town plan that's up to date, and then the next process, it, the planning boards is, then they look at the bylaws again to try to make sure they meet the town plan. And, and because the town plan hasn't been done over again, it's just rolling over the, the same one. You've got the same bylaws, what we need to do is work on whatever the plan's gonna be, and get enough input, because we might get all the input that Ronnie's saying this time, who knows? And if we do, then the bylaws will have to be adjusted to meet those requirements.
There's a lot of things, I think, Nelson, that we, we need to take a look at as far as the town, there's no question, we need to update, upgrade, and, and all the things that you just said, I, I, you know, I can't, I'm not against any of that. But you know, uh, there's some things that are all of a sudden popping up over the last, um, very few years, is our safety in town. I mean, that, that, that needs to be a part of our future plan in this town too, and that goes back to the planners, even the planners need to talk about that. Uh, what, what are we gonna do to make this a safer place to be? Right now, it's sorta safe, but it, it's, it's getting worse all the time. There's, um, there's, um, I mean, down to simple things like, um, what, twelve, fourteen, uh, signs being stolen. There's, um, motors, wow, but there's motorcycles and ATVs and a whole list of things. Guns and, I mean, these are people that we all know, this isn't, uh, uh, um, talking through the wind. And it's getting, and it's getting worse all the time, so yes, we have, you know, there's a lot of things, and I think our planners need to really take a look at some of the real, uh, serious to make it a, a safer place to live, I guess is the right words, right? And, um, and, and you're absolutely right, growth, do we want growth? Where do we want it? Do we want it here in this village? That was the whole idea of a sewer, um, uh, our wastewater, um, uh, pro- project, however many, ten years, fifteen years ago.
Health issues.
Okay, so, so our, our, all this planning, it's all, you know, okay, but, but we don't have to worry, um, the, um, uh, pollution parts in town do the, uh, wastewater and that's been sort of solved, so now we're into a different program. And, um, but, boy, I, I, I mean, our planners really gotta voice it out there that, uh, to help guide us through this, I mean, we may not agree with you, I may not agree with a lot of things that you're saying, but, um.
I think we're supposed to reflect what the community wants.
That's right, that's right, and, and it's hard for you to get that information sometimes, I understand, I was there too, so. Okay, very good, I spoke.
I guess, I, again, I, and I agree with what's all said, but the way you make that change is by working on a town plan, having communication, and changing the things to meet what Ronnie or, or Henry or whoever says, to try and meet the goals that you wanna get based on the information you gather.
And, and I, and I think on, and I think on some of these issues, as far as what we're talking about right now, I think we have to be very, very careful that we're not starting to scare people, that, uh, uh, that we're, we're into this great change, the planners are into this great change that maybe we don't want, so.
We don't know what we want.
That's the problem, right? So we need to, we really need to voice it more, I think, okay?
I think, I think one of the things too, that, uh, I think is key for the planning, uh, board is to define who we are as a community. What we are as a community, I think that is key. Let's not try to pre- pretend something we're not, let's define what we are and who we are as a community and start there. That's my only input.
Any, anything else from the board? Anything from the public? Okay, but that said, Sid has requested that basically we approve five thousand dollars so that the, they can move forward towards a grant, with the understanding that if they get the grant, that they'll be coming back requesting the rest of the, the funds needed to meet the writing of the plan.
Meet the contract and the writing of the plan, and I hope the board would conditionally commit to that. Conditioned upon us getting the grant.
Nobody's made the motion. Who's got nerve enough to make that motion?
Must be you, Henry, you're talking.
I, I move, I move, I, I, at least we'll get it on the floor, okay?
So, so I got a motion to, to go ahead with the five thousand dollars, with the, with the condition that if they get the grant, we're gonna move on the other.
Okay. I'll second it.
Okay, any further discussion? Are we discussing this to death? All those in favor say aye.
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 Aye. Get in here.
Thank you, gentlemen.
Yeah, and thank you.
Thanks.
Okay.
We'll call the road foreman up here, but we're gonna talk about the safety, uh, policy of off hour staff first, and then we'll go with the bids. Only because I, I think we can cover this one quickly, I hope. There's been some, there's been some issues where people have gone out alone at night in rainstorms and so forth, and have to remove trees and different things from the road, which could be an unsafe thing if something falls on them. And we're bringing that up for discussion.
I move we have two people go out, after hours.
Responding to emergency situations.
Yeah.
And I feel, feel the same about the wastewater crew also.
Yeah.
Going out for alarms, pump stations.
Employees.
You know, employees in general.
What you said, what, employees, right?
That's right, employees in general.
I would like to see two, be a two, two-person operation.
Any emergency situation.
Except for, uh, winter maintenance.
Which is standard.
Plowing, sanding, go on, going out at night, you know?
There's never, there's never really been any policy, I mean, just, we just try to, you know, when there's a tree down that is actually too big for one guy to do, usually it's just a branch.
when there's a tree down that is actually too big for one guy to do, usually it's just a branch or a small tree or something. But if, what happens is, if a big tree falls and you need two guys, you just get on the phone or the radio or something and call, and somebody comes and helps.
Yeah, we don't wanna kick back and get anybody hurt.
Yeah, that's fine.
I guess it's, it's an insurance thing too. I think it's a good policy. Uh, that way you're not there alone, Casey. My God, you get whacks right to head with a limb, only this big.
Dark, raining like crazy.
It's a tough place to be, I know.
Now, now, also, we have to think about the fact that if Darcy needs to have someone come out at night with her, or whoever it be, and there isn't two available from wastewater, I'm gonna assume that they're gonna be calling on one from highway to go with them.
But, but...
Yeah, but that having an understanding.
I don't want that to be understood, that we're, I mean, I want the, I want whoever it is. If you go out for a tree or something, or something in the, in the road, you got a cell phone, you can call somebody when you're out there.
Yeah.
Or if you're gonna use a saw. But as far as the wastewater, if somebody's gonna go reset a switch, I'm not all for that. I don't mind if they're gonna do something, you know, but they may be just going to reset an alarm. I think they should go to the thing first, the saw.
Assess the situation. Assess the situation. There's certain statutes, there's certain statutes, label law that requires that if they're gonna go in the hole.
I know if they're going in confined spaces, I know all about that stuff, Nelson. All I'm saying is, if you, why would, you don't have to get two people to ride up to Powell Center to reset a alarm.
I agree with you, but I'm saying the same thing as what Casey just said. That if they get in a situation where they have to go where, you know, label law or otherwise requires to, they need to get on the phone, call.
Absolutely, I'm fine with that.
And I think that should be put in the personnel policy as well. I think it should be written in the personnel policy as well. An amendment, or whatever you want.
Could you draft something, Linda, basically, that, an emergency calls that, you know, to do with two people responding when required?
Yeah, you get it rolled up, and then we'll approve it.
Yeah, that's what I'm asking for.
Yep.
Because that's really what we look for. When it's required for two people, we want them to do it.
Yeah.
We don't want anybody to risk anything.
Definitely.
No injuries required. Okay, anything else, staff? Nothing with that? Okay. Road foreman, we have some bids here. And I'll start with the dump body and plow equipment bid first. What's your feelings on that? We have three bids. If everybody's in agreement, I'll read them off.
Yeah.
Basically, we have bids for... I probably should say what it's for. Where's the bids at? Get the right folder here. This is to fit our new truck with...
You know, I never did, you heard, is the truck ever gonna come?
Yeah, it's ordered.
Oh, I didn't know when it was gonna come. I mean, did anybody ever, oh, wow.
It takes, uh, because it usually, what?
Six months or something?
No, no, it's only like, it's eight weeks.
Oh.
Nine, 10 weeks.
Oh, okay, yeah, all right, but, okay.
This is the purchase of all-season dump body and plow equipment for a single act of 7,400 series international with the 90-inch cab. Okay, so it's the plowing equipment, seasonal. With that...
Question, what's the new plow?
No plow.
No plow?
No.
Okay.
Okay. And basically, we have our truck equipment for $53,167. Viking shives, is that the way it's called?
Chives, yeah.
$48,450, and Z-Wac Incorporated, $47,517. What's your pleasure?
I make a motion, we award it to Z-Wac.
Second.
Being low bidder?
Yep, and we've done business with them before.
We've done business with them before.
Yeah.
You've never had any trouble?
Everything we got comes from Z-Wac.
Okay.
Okay, with that said, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, would you notify them that they're, they won the bid and can start, when is the truck due in?
That I'm not exactly sure of. I can make a phone call there and find out.
So, can anybody give me a final figure on the cost of this truck?
I...
No, so we're gonna have to pinch the pennies.
Well, I think for sure you're gonna add $47,517 to it.
No, it's 85, 90?
I had the warranty.
What was 85? So that's 112, about 130-some thousand. Okay, that's good enough. Okay, now, moving on, folks.
Second.
We did vote on it, so, moving on. Administrator, this bid has been, come in for black topping. We got Woke Paving Incorporated for $85.95 a ton, which came in at 120, it's for 1,400 ton. $120,330. Pike Industries, $84.34 a ton. $118,076. Del Sinor, $79,000, for $110,600. Bodine Paving, for $77,000 a ton, for $107,800. What's your pleasure?
Make the motion, we go with Bodine.
Second.
Okay, go ahead, Henry.
I want to talk on it. What does that consist of?
1,400 tons of half-inch and three-quarter mix and six different sections of town.
Like we talked before, or whatever it was.
I'll read off what's gonna be the black topping of it.
Yeah, yeah, I can't, okay, what I was after was, is, uh, who's prepping, prepping the job? We are?
No, they are.
We are.
Yeah, they're sweeping, tag coat, uh, traffic control.
You answered my question.
Uh, tag coat, everything.
Okay.
Uh, and this is Lad Road, it's getting some Oak Hill School Road, these are all the places we talked about. Burlington Road, the section down at the south end.
Yeah.
Bee Hill Road.
Yeah.
Evergreen, and Cash Place. Okay, those little places. That are, with the 1,400 ton. Okay. Did I, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
I think that was the piece I didn't do. Okay. And that takes care of all the business that we had. I was gonna ask a question of Bill to do with black topping, simply because a lot of people are asking, and it's to do with Route 7. We noticed it doing a lot of shimming in skim coats and stuff. What can we expect as a finished product out there?
It's been described to me, and it still is described to me, I checked with, it's Mark McIntosh. I don't know if you've been in touch with him, he's the project engineer for this area. Is that if you wanna know what it's supposed to be like, it would be when you're driving up to Rutland, that section of what they did to Route 7 up through Danby, and so it's, I think it's called Chip Seal?
Nova Seal.
Nova Seal. Um, and I think a lot of people have felt, because they're painting lines, that maybe they're all done or things, so, uh, be patient. I think what they're trying to do is make sure, what with their sequencing of time, that the road stays safe in case they're starting here or there tomorrow. Right now, it's, and Casey really knows about this much more than I do, but it's preparation. You ought to put that over what they've done for the aprons on the roads or so. So, I have asked for, I did not receive it this morning, but when I get it, I will email it to my list, and Linda, you get that as well. Uh, I think you're all on it, you get it. As to what to expect, and generally, when Mark McIntosh basically promised that to me. If people have particular issues, he will be the go-to person, and it's mark, period McIntosh, M-A-C-K-I-N-T-O-S-H, at state.vt.us. Uh, and I've been directed to work through him. If people have particular issues, we already have with some people about how you might enter or leave your property, or are the lips appropriate, and things along that line. That's about really all I, you know, I have to say about it. Does anybody have any questions?
Well, uh, you know, one of the things is, people are talking about it a lot, is the traffic control. Uh, I think, and that's why people were worried about what was being done, and how long they were gonna put up with, you know, the waits and stuff. And I think that the real issue, what I'm hearing is, is people need to be patient. More is coming, but expect some traffic control for a while yet.
Oh, there will be, there will be. I think they try to do a decent job of if you have to stand in line, you aren't there. We know what paving jobs are for a period or two. Um, people may wonder, why are they paving the road? Uh, I think there've been a lot of, you know, studies that if you maintain a road, it'll save you money over time, rather than, because you notice they aren't having to come and bring the big machine and chew it all the way down to the bottom. So they put it down, they did that big job 12 years ago, or 10 years ago, whatever it was. Then they did crack sealing, and now the protocol is to come back and do the novo seal over the top. Uh, and long range, you'll spend less money. This also is a US highway, and, which is eligible for US funds at a different rate. People have asked me about Route 346, why aren't they doing 346? The problem's there. Because I don't know where 346 is in their lineup. I do know that 34, if you drive to north, 346 and 7 are fairly decent rides compared to going up to Bethel and over the mountain, where it's, you know, it's pretty tough, and those are roads that need to be taken all the way down to the bottom. Uh, and as you know, Casey, that's far more expensive. So, uh, if people have questions about the road, and what's happening, and issues, please, you know, don't hesitate to call me. Get in touch with me, email, phone. I think I'm pretty easy to reach, I'm in all the public records, and I imagine, Casey, you're being kept in the loop about what's happening and where. I don't know if you have anything to add.
Uh, the only thing I have to add is, they did an overlay on 346 two or three years ago.
Right.
And that kind of leveled that up good shape. There's still some spots down there that probably does need some crack sealing. Uh, they did crack seal out here just recently before they started their shimming. Uh, the reason why they started by the school and went north, because the wheel ruts were so much deeper than they were down here. Uh, so that, there's, that's all being shimmed first. And then they're gonna take regular asphalt, they do all the shoulders, the shoulders that they cut in on all the town highways, and all the private drives, they're gonna just level that up with regular asphalt. That's why they're leaving that little bit of a lip on the, on the travel portion side of 7. And when they're coming down through, weather's not been cooperating, at least in the last few days for them, but, uh, that's the plan. That stuff will go down about an inch thick, and then it'll compact to about three-quarters.
And this was a contract that was let a fair amount of time ago, and, you know, the federal issues don't affect this particular contract?
They're adding shoulder, uh, from about the racetrack down to the mass line. That's what that machine is doing, chewing up a shoulder to get it, so that they could blend into it without causing a nice big crack down through there. They've got it all cut out behind underneath the guard rails, and so that the water will run good. And, he didn't give me a timeframe, I actually, uh, the resident engineer is the one I talked with.
Okay.
Uh, they're actually gonna add some shoulder on the apron, northbound lane, just before you turn onto Lad Road. Because it's real narrow in there, and there's a dirt portion. We filled it in a while ago, but it just, it needs more material. So they're gonna put about five or six foot width shoulder right along to make that turn. I don't know if they'll line it or not, but at least there'll be a spot where somebody can pull off to get out of the way of fast-moving traffic to turn on Lad.
It's been very helpful when people have brought to all of us some attention on some things, and I did have one question. It was that I know that we asked before, and there was a letter that went to the state about some of the other issues. Has there been a response? I've been aware of. Might be, I might ask if Rob Evans has come down to take a look and what the plan is.
Yeah.
Thank you. I expect the letter to go to you and not to me.
Yeah, we...
But if you do hear, let me know, so I'm kept in the, let's all keep each other in the loop.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, I know there was some, there's some verbal discussion at some of the stuff that had already started, so that they, you know, couldn't address some of the things we were doing because the work had been designed and started, but we never received the response to our request itself. And, uh, I, but I, maybe part of the attention where they're painting the line so much is because if you look at the sections, the section we were concerned so much about safety, and they shim it, paint it, and that was the other question, where they done, because they painted it. I think they painted it because of safety.
Exactly. That's this, the answer I got when I wrote recently, so, okay?
Okay, thank you, Bill.
Thank you.
I got a couple, I had one quick question on our paving, the town paving. We talked about doing some patching before winter.
Yeah, we've been working on Burlington Road, there we got quite a bit more of the worst sections dug up.
Okay.
To try to make it smooth. Uh, I don't know when you wanna actually attempt to dig that up, but we probably should. I thought it was a good idea to try to get a local contractor, measure it up per square feet, by two inches, and just put an overlay over the dirt that we've, we've got dug up.
Just wanna make sure we don't, we stay on that.
Yeah.
Yep.
And you, uh, that's where you put the culverts across and all that sort of stuff?
Yes, I mean, well, the north end is, uh, we've still got a few more spots where the concrete has, has came up, and, uh, we have actually cut the asphalt off because it's curled up so much. There's a couple more sections of those that are gonna come out first. And right by Burlington's barn, there's a good depression where there's a culvert, it's a big culvert, so it's nothing that we're gonna replace. It's actually in pretty good shape, but we may take the asphalt up and then gravel over it, and then...
Question.
To level it.
Then you rub it up. But let me see if these people wanna spot that over for us, for that first.
Like, well, I think we need to find out exactly what we're gonna have.
How many square feet?
Until we get, you know, till ahead to the end.
Well, I would have a look at it, that would, you know, while, because they're gonna be coming. I mean, if we award them the bid, I was just gonna have Casey see them.
Yeah, we need to, we need, we need to know how much.
Yeah, and how much it's gonna come.
Then we make a difference, whether or not we can say go ahead because if he gives us a price, or if we have to go to bid again, it's just...
Well, the thing was, is whether if you wanna go to bid again, that's, you know, that's fine too.
Well, it's based on how much it's gonna be.
Yeah, and how much it's gonna be, you know what I'm saying?
Because of the policy we have, if it is a certain amount, we need to, if it isn't, then we can deal with what you're saying.
If I took and figured out how many extra ton it would take, and it was under a certain amount, then that would be...
Well, we got a bid for tons, so...
Yeah, well...
The main thing is, if you don't wanna spend the money.
Well, the question...
Well, patching is gonna be a lot different than the actual...
Oh, I understand, I'm just...
Probably a difference in price, I would think.
Yeah, we'll find out.
It all depends if you had, had it all prepped first, and they just lay their machine down there, and that's...
And he's gonna be right in the area anyways, but taking, yeah...
I can, I can ask, doesn't hurt to ask.
Then we report back to the board, then we can make a decision.
It depends how busy they are.
That's what makes the difference.
I mean, and if, and if not, get back to us, and if you want, we'll have that number. I mean, we can't...
Well, you'll have their number from doing a certain amount, any number that you do, uh, in a patching, like Jason says, it's gonna be totally different than that.
Okay, but we'll get there.
Lot more handwork involved, and...
All right, back to your request here for crack sealing and parts for the crusher. Which one you wanna do first?
The, oh, I'll just make it a difference, but the, I called the, and finally got three people to get back to me on jaws for the crusher. Uh, we replaced them once, I think it was in 2011. So they last, you know, quite a while. Yeah, and they were, the, set they're in it were called Concave, they're smooth. And, uh, we're gonna go with a ragged-jawed one, the one that was actually in it originally, which is actually less expensive than the Concave one. So it's 2288 for the jaws and the cheap plates that actually hold them in, and that's what we need. Plus another, whatever the shipping is. So that's what I'm looking for.
When you say 2288, what do you...
That's the cost of the jaws and the cheap plates.
2288, 2,200.
2,288 dollars, yeah.
That's where I was going. Well, don't we authorize you to expand up to a certain amount anyways?
Yeah, but, uh, originally it was looking like 4,200 dollars, and, uh...
How many yards you pushed through this crusher, do you have?
Uh, over 2,000. So...
Do we have product right now to crush?
Oh, yeah.
We have.
Yeah. A lot of nice round stone, perfect size for it.
I would say, go ahead.
That's a motion to approve the 2,080, $2,288.
You oughta come over, you know, and I can give you a... You oughta come over, you know, and I can give you a tour, so that you can see exactly what we've got.
I, I would say, the motion is to go ahead and buy the crusher parts.
Yes, my motion is to go ahead and buy the crusher parts.
Second to that? Must be these guys don't wanna.
I think there needs to be some discussion on, on our, on the gravel operation in town, the future of our gravel.
Uh, we can have a motion and then we can deny it if you wish, it's just.
I mean, we'll.
I'll, I'll second the motion.
We got the, we got the machine.
Yeah, because we're discussing it anyhow, thanks, thank you.
Yes, okay, so regardless of.
Just policy, procedure. All right, so, okay, what, do you have something you wanted to say? Ronnie? You always got something to say tonight.
That's right, I got something to say on that, I think that that's a, first of all, I was under the impression there was hardly any material over there. Second of all, I've never been in favor of the, of the crusher anyway. Only because we used to get it crushed by outside contractors, and they'd crush up a bunch of it, we knew what it was. We didn't have to tie up two machines playing around with that, that was my own opinion. And, uh, so that's why I'm, I'm not too eager to put more into something like that, you gotta, the thing, you gotta feed it with a back hole. Uh, I can't see where the production can be that great, and, and I don't think the material's over there. I think we should be looking for, for some more material somewhere. And as far as I'm concerned, uh, the other system always worked well. When, uh, Ernest used to crush it, so, so did, uh, the other guy before him, I guess. We've had three, four people crush, we had a gravel crushing fund, we knew what it was, we knew how much material we're using. This is all speculation as far as I'm concerned, and I, and, you know, it's a real old machine and very, very inefficient as far as I'm concerned.
Okay, anyone else?
You know, I, I feel, I feel we should be spending more time out on our roads. And not, to me, it's, it's not cost-effective to make it ourselves, unless you could prove, prove different.
Well, I can't, uh.
I've said, like Ronnie said, I mean, you look around, I mean, when they do the construction project in town here, they hired someone to come in with a crusher into a local gravel bed, and they made up, in, in less than a week. I mean, made up a, you know, and I think with the underst, you know, if we know roughly what, what, what we need, what we're using, what we should be using every year on our roads for gravel. You know, I think we should be looking at whatever cost to have someone come and make, put the product up for us and make it for us, or even buy it, if that, if that's the case, if, you know. But I think we need to look at the whole situation and, and take a step back and, you know, see what the cost of it is, see whether it's, if it's, if it's efficient for us to go to Harts. And when we need gravel, go down and buy it, I mean, if, we just look at that, I think we should look at having someone come in and make, I mean, I was under the impression that we didn't have any gravel left over there.
That we were gonna run out.
That we were, that we were.
Well, we're saying we're gonna run out someday.
Yeah, we're gonna run out someday. And, uh, did, did anybody get a chance to do anything about, uh, North Panel? Taking a look and going down and asking any of the property owners that did talk?
We're waiting to see who owns the land at this point. I don't know, I, I heard that it might have sold, but I don't know if it has or not.
How much gravel, two thousand dollars, buy?
Uh, what's gravel, eighteen dollars a yard nowadays?
It's about a ton, I'm not, I'm not sure. I would say quite a bit.
Say.
How many yards is that, when you say a ton?
Depends on, on the type of material you're buying.
If they got it rained on the day before they.
It could be a little more.
You know, I, 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 I think that, uh, the select board oughta come over to the gravel bed just to see exactly what we've got, I mean, you, you, you.
I'm for it.
If, uh, you know, if you don't think that there's any gravel over there, I mean, you need to take a look first.
I think there's gravel over there, or I, there's something over there, I don't know what it is, some people call it gravel, so, I, I think that we can go there and find it. I think that, um, I'm gonna agree with you, that I think that we need to get somebody in there that can move some of this, um, uh, material through. Uh, and do our best to have some sand and some gravel, some kinda gravel, I don't know.
How many years have we been making a lot of gravel?
Okay, but, um, I'm gonna.
I think it's oh, ten, two thousand ten we got the machine, or eleven, I can't remember which.
Okay.
I, I, I gotta add, I, I wanna just, um, throw a little something out. Uh, I'm gonna, I'm, I think that we oughta put the twenty-two hundred dollars in that thing over there, I don't think we're gonna die from doing that. But at the same, you follow me? Okay, but at the same time, I, I do wanna say this, um, Casey, I think that, uh, the town of Panel needs to know. Uh, so we have it on record, so we don't have to, uh, rag on. Um, if we need to buy some material down here to Hart in the future, we should have some idea what that cost is. Um, whether it's crushed or whether it's screened or, uh, whatever we, whatever we need, 'cause I don't know. Um, and how many, approximately how many yards a year, does that make sense in a year? Or how many we've been using? And, and I don't know if it's, I, I'm saying Hart, so I don't care, wherever you wanna go, okay?
I mean, that was just a figure of speech because they're open every day.
That's right, so, I mean, it may, it, someplace else, I mean, I, I don't want somebody to say, hey, you know.
No, there's other people in town, they're right.
Yeah, okay, you probably, I gotta be careful here, okay, uh, but wherever we can go. Um, and, um, uh, what that's gonna do is it's gonna tell us in some, and at the same time, approximately, how many yards you have been doing a year, he should be able to tell us that, wouldn't you like to know? You know what I'm saying? Okay, that's gonna help answer your, his question, okay? Now, with all that said.
Yes, I do have.
Uh, we need some information, so we know in what direction we wanna go.
Yeah.
Do we wanna pursue this North Panel dream or not? There might be, there might not be, uh, can we get it right away, who owns it? Well, I think we can find all that out, Casey.
Even if it was just for sand, I mean.
That's right, that's fine, but if it's the material, we don't care what kind, right, Ron? I, I, would you agree with that, I mean, if there's sand down there, we, we should know it, and then we're after it.
Look, we supposedly got thirty acres of property in that land trust agreement that was made.
Right.
Now, come on, if we got it, we oughta, we oughta go after it.
And, and let's find out how we're gonna get in there, right?
And that's just common sense.
No, but, and find out how.
That's right.
Okay, so let's get on it and let's move forward and let's do it. And at the same time, uh, Casey's invited us over, um, to spend some time and walk around and take a look at, um, I mean, after all, uh, what would you estimate that, uh, we've gotten, uh, invested in, um, in, um, the highway department? Probably a half a million dollars between equipment and properties?
All of that.
Okay, well, good enough, I don't wanna go crazy, but, you know what I'm saying? So, we've got something to really take a look at, and, and, and I think Casey's quite proud of what he has over there, okay?
Sure.
So let's, let's get together and, and, and make an appointment and let's do it, so.
Back to the motion?
Good.
You're calling the motion?
I'm calling the motion.
Aye, motion's been called, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those with nays?
Nay.
I'm a nay.
What a nay. Aye.
What are you, why would I say yes?
I always say yes.
We'll get that guy to just speak up.
We gotta force him.
Okay, good, but that way this thing is, that way what we have is working.
You always have.
Whether it's.
Not always.
But get some information for us, Casey, it'll move us.
I'd also, I'd also like to take up his offer and, and let's go over there some afternoon, some evening.
That's where we're moving, let's, let's, um, do it right now, make a, make a time.
When the new truck comes in.
Yeah, uh, let's do it be, let, no, let's do it before, let's, let's, I, I think that, uh, Casey wants us to really.
You wanna go over there and get a long, long, long night, so, next Thursday, meet over there at six, then come here and do your.
Is that enough time?
Half hour, no?
I don't know, is it?
I, I, I think.
Last time we went over, I felt rushed.
Nelson, it doesn't work.
Huh?
It didn't work, the board was rushed.
Let's, let's make, let's, come on, we, we can get together whenever, I, I don't care when, but, it's somebody.
Why don't you say aye?
I don't care when.
You make a time, Henry, come on.
Listen, I'm on the, I'm on.
You're available all the time.
I'm, well, one time is just the same.
It's all the same, you know?
If you wanna give us a demonstration, I'd like to go over and see this crusher crushing material.
We gotta wait to buy some parts.
Well, well, okay.
I wanna see how fast it is, you already okayed him.
I think he's gonna have information for us.
When will you have the parts in for this crusher and have it working?
Uh, I'm not even sure, I didn't, uh, he's got the parts in stock, I know that, so.
Where are they coming from?
Uh, it's New York, Fort New York, maybe?
Next Wednesday afternoon?
Wait, I wanna know when, when the crusher parts gonna be in?
Well, there's, there's jaw, it's usable right now, I mean.
Okay, good.
Okay, just so it's usable.
If it's usable right now, don't use it, that way it's working.
Oh, it, it works. It works all the time.
I'm only bitching.
Next Wednesday?
Next Wednesday.
What time?
It works all the time, anytime, anytime you want, whatever.
Got a set of time, I have to warn it, I gotta have it.
Well, I, uh, and at the same time, because I want all the fellas there, I wanna, I wanna.
Can everybody make it by six, or you?
Work for us and.
Well, wait a minute, you're not gonna fire it up at six o'clock at night, right?
No.
You're gonna have in the afternoon.
Not that loud.
No, no.
Okay.
What time can you make it to early?
Six o'clock, that's what I'm saying, I'll be there at six.
Next Wednesday, six p.m.?
Wednesday, what's that day?
I gotta say, you, you work on Wednesdays?
Yeah, I am, but I'll, I'll.
It's like August six.
I could be there right around six.
Well, we'll make a different date.
No, that's fine.
We don't have to.
That's fine.
You wanna meet on a Sunday? Fire it up then?
That's good, no, it's good.
August six, six P.M.?
Okay.
August six, six P.M.
Good, good.
Purpose is to go over and, uh.
Well, I don't care.
Review what we have.
Whenever, we're gonna review the gravel and whatever else you can show us.
That's it, the road foreman's gonna show us around the mine and, and the equipment.
And might even, uh, discuss.
And that's another reason why I'm not in for our crushing deal, is because we're classified as a mine. And that's, you know, it's more regulations and stuff, and, I mean, if we had a real fancy, we had a, had a lot of material there and a big goings-on, I could be all for it.
It'd probably a mine, no matter what you do.
Anytime you screen and separate material, you're in consideration.
You're in, went under more regulations when you got the crusher, don't sit there and tell me that.
Well, I'm telling you that, uh, there's not a whole lot much more.
Did you have any inspectors and stuff before that, did they come over, did they holler about a crack in the windshield on, on the loader and things like that?
They did all that, yes, but that really didn't have much to do with the crusher.
We had a both of them, we're gonna do it Wednesday at six, okay? And now, the other thing we had was this crack sealing.
Yeah, a local gentleman has been doing it for the last, oh, he's been doing it since, uh, oh four, I believe. And we had a company come in, uh, Nikon the year prior to that, and, um, this gentleman said that he claimed that he could do it more cost-effective, and as it stands right now, it costs two dollars and seventy-six cents a pound to put down. I haven't got a hold of Nikon yet, 'cause I wasn't really sure if that's the route you wanted to take, but it's a ten thousand dollar purchase every year, so.
Your recommendation, Casey, what do you recommend?
Where are we doing?
It will be done, uh, from, well, just Washington Brook Road, all the new blacktop that we put all the way down to Seven. Just to take, take care of the cracks and all the new stuff. Same on North Panel Road, and we're gonna finish the section of North Panel Road that we put a grant in for, for the last three years to resurface, 'cause it did get quite finished. And I'm not sure exactly how much material will be left when that's done. Uh, but there's other sections, uh, bottom of Hidden Valley, uh, some of, uh, Middle Panel Road. Uh, there's a couple sections on Jackson Crossway on the upper side, because the lower side only got, uh, two-inch overlay by Bashis where it cuts off right there, because the road was in such a mess at that time that, uh, that's what we decided to do. But, those are the ones.
So there's only two people that do it?
There's two people that do it.
That do crack sealing, I don't know, that's on, that's my question.
Yeah.
There's only two people that do crack sealing?
Well, that I know of, that I've dealt with. There's a guy that, that, uh, Bennington had, um, rented a machine, uh, I don't exactly remember exactly what the cost of it was, but, uh, uh, actual, the gentleman that does it for us, he actually went with us to that class and got all the particulars, and he says, yeah, this is what, this is what, uh, this is what it cost them and this is what it cost you. But that's what it cost, two dollars and seventy-six cents a pound last year. They put down thirty-six hundred and twenty ton, or pounds of rubber, and it's put down at, uh, four hundred degrees, so it, it's flat.
I, I guess, uh, what I'm looking for, Casey, is, is what are you, what are you recommending and what are you asking for? Are you asking for ten thousand dollars to go out and do crack sealing, or what are you doing?
What I'm, what I'm asking is, is that since it is a ten thousand dollar purchase, is the board is comfortable with, uh, the same company doing it that has been doing it since oh four?
I, I, I can't, I haven't been out to look at the, the crack seal in the sense of knowing the quality of work they do, that's why I'm asking you. If you're comfortable with them, then I'm, I'm gonna be comfortable.
I'm happy with the quality of work and I'm happy with the product that they're using. That's, that rubber is the most important.
But we have a policy in place that says it's gotta go out to bid.
That's right, and we can do that, that's why I'm here.
Well, I guess, I guess we, we're saying too, never mind, a couple minutes ago, I said, hey, listen, let's go down there and finish up this job down here, well, I got killed right there. Can only spend five grand. So, now, yeah, now, now you, now we're gonna spend ten grand, so I guess we gotta bid.
We're gonna go to bid.
Okay, so that settles that, okay.
We're gonna go to, basically what we'll do is, well, if you're recommending ten thousand dollars, then we'll say we'll go to bid for crack sealing, we'll see what comes back.
I'm not gonna recommend, um, I'm not gonna, I, I don't think that we, I wanna do it that way, I think this time around, I think if we're gonna bid it out, Casey, I think that you should, uh, find the roads, the roads that you've got and, and bid it, or bid it for X amount of, of pounds.
Okay.
Or both, bid it both ways, you follow what I'm getting, what I'm getting at, is I don't wanna tell somebody, I got ten grand, I don't know if that's a good, I don't know if that's a good program, okay? If it's twelve, then fine, we'll finish the job, if it's nine, well, then fine, we'll have a thousand left over, if that's what's in the budget, I don't even know. But I think that we oughta, if we're gonna bid it.
Are they charging us by the pound?
By the pound, he said.
Uh, that's the way it averages out, is by the pound.
And what we wanna know is what the price is per pound, that's the bid.
Per, per pound and how much, and they'll give us an estimate of.
Specify a certain material, there's, there's a whole bunch of different grades of that stuff.
That's right.
How many pounds have you been using there on average?
Uh, in oh four, we used six thousand pounds, and now we're, it was, uh, thirty-six twenty last year.
I, I guess what I would say is, we decide what the poundage, just like we did for black topping, and say this is how many pounds we want, and then go to bid.
Is crack sealing worth putting down?
Oh, yes. Keeps the water out.
That is what, a crack seal expert, or, I'm just, just curious?
They never did crack sealing here until I saw it done at my work, and I recommended it here that many years ago, and we've been doing it ever since, and we probably saved roads from having to be black topped at least four or five years in length.
This gotta be an advantage, I mean, they're keeping the water out of it.
You don't hope that.
Every time that I stop and see, if I'm on the road, if I stop and I get out and there's, there's a crack seal in there, it's always cracked right side of it. That's the only reason I was asking.
You ever seal your driveway?
I can ask the question too.
Oh, you don't have black top in your driveway? I got my Henry, I can ask. I seal my driveway and it's the same thing, I go down my driveway and I see those cracks in every one where I seal it every year. But, but.
Your driveway doesn't have any.
But, I don't know, I had a lot of truck traffic there this year, but basically what you're looking at is, is, the, the, it doesn't make the traffic, unless that crack, it's, that ice gets in there, you, then you get a big chunk falling off, and that's what you don't want, then you get alligator.
Apparently, black top is porous, water goes through it anyway, 'cause it comes up through the bottom where it'll leak. You know, so that's why I'm, I'm questioning it, I'm questioning the, you know, all these theories, I like to question now, it's just worth, worth the money.
That's okay, does Bennington crack seal?
They just started.
I believe they do.
Yeah.
It's, I think it's something relatively new.
Yeah.
Uh, we've done it for many years, I know that we were told on that, I don't know why, but I guess we had money to burn, I don't know.
That's it.
I mean, I would think you'd be, I would think you'd be, you know, we could find out if there's other, you know, other people that would.
And I know Nikon does it, uh.
Jack and Lionel know somebody that.
Yeah, so what, again, I'll go back to, if you wanna do it through a bid process, I thi, we heard everything from thirty-six to, what'd you say, six thousand pounds?
Well, I think they'll take a look at.
Originally, originally they started out, it was, it was six thousand pounds of rubber they were using.
Well, what, what, what he's done in the past is he's run far enough, is, until he runs out of the money.
Yeah.
So what I'm saying is, the same goes if we say we wanna bid six thousand pounds out, we're gonna run until we run out of money, come on, you go down my road and you'll see where the, this crack sealing stopped, I assume you're in out of money for what we did on the bid. So I'm saying, as a board, how much crack seal that we think we wanna do, and how much was budgeted for it, for one thing, I just put that away. Uh, but we could say, hey, here's how much, uh, we estimated it'll buy.
Ten thousand. Ten thousand's what we budget every year for.
Okay, so, and if that's what you did, how mu, and if you're saying the poundage is how much?
Well, they used thirty-six twenty last year.
And you cost you ten grand?
It cost ten grand. That's two dollars and seventy-six cents a pound installed.
Okay, so it was two seventy-six, so. Oh, yeah, so it was two seventy-six, so...
Places he showed.
So, so if he did, it was two seventy-six a pound last year, and I know it's gone up, because black top's gone up like hell. So, so the question, I guess, we, we would say is, do we wanna say we're gonna do twenty-five hundred or three thousand pounds worth?
Now, you're telling me you wanna do four thousand pounds, and when it comes in at twelve thousand, and one eleven thousand, you say, well, how much for doing thirty-six hundred pounds? And then you're gonna get less than ten, ten grand, you'll get your, you'll get your same...
Well, the, no, we're gonna take the, we're gonna take the chance that we're gonna either come in under ten grand, or we're gonna come in on ten grand, or we're gonna be over. We just gonna say, this is how much we want done on our roads. You know, we know that the crack sealing needs to be done. You're telling us that. And there's lots of places that needs to be done. So, so you're gonna go out and try to figure out, by showing all these spots, huh, here, how close can I come to ten thousand dollars? You have no clue, because they're gonna come back and say, this is the poundage that's gonna take the cover.
It's one of the hardest things to try to estimate.
Right, so you're better off saying, I wanna buy this many pounds, and then you take them out, and you do the roads you wanna do that are the worst. And, and to me...
And when the pounds run out, you stop.
You stop.
That's all the rest.
We're saying with the black topping, what we're doing, we're saying we're gonna black top this far on Barrington, we're gonna do this much here, and we did it by poundage. It's no difference.
Tonnage, yeah.
Well, it's estimated, you're, it's a ton.
Yeah, well, and, and the difference is here is pounds. So, so I'm saying, we, we have an estimate of what it means for the amount of money. He's saying, what was it, three thousand six hundred?
Thirty-six twenty.
Last year, so let, let's say, well, let's bid up thirty-five hundred pounds. If the price went up, we'll be over. If the price went down, we're gonna be under.
I think we're beating ourselves a lot. Let's, let's do something.
Yeah, let's move on.
Make the motion.
Make a motion that we, we're gonna uh...
Put it out to bid.
Put it out to bid. Put those places out to bid.
Make a motion that we get a price per pound.
Per pound, there.
That's all.
Good.
Yeah.
Then, then we'll, you know, I mean, if they, if they say, well, how many pounds, we're down three, four, five thousand. Give us a price.
Yeah.
Well, that's what I'm saying, let's...
But then it'll be per pound.
Oh, just tell them, this is the one, this is the kinda style of material that we wanna use, and we wanna put down at four hundred degrees.
That's right.
And how much per pound?
And this is what we used last year. You can tell, because that's gonna make a difference, whether you're buying five hundred pounds or five thousand.
Or five pounds. That's why I'm saying, if you, if you estimate that you're gonna use at least three thousand pounds, gives them a price.
Okay, is that the motion?
Good.
Yeah.
Yep, I'll second it.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I abstain from that one.
You shouldn't.
I talk too much about it.
I'm gonna start asking your reasons for abstaining.
I did that because Ronnie voted.
No, no, you have no reason to abstain if he, he discussed it.
Yep.
And that's it.
Okay, uh, anything else on our agenda? Anything else you have for us, Casey?
Uh, the only thing I got is uh, my kid's gonna be wrestling in Thousand Islands, upstate New York, and we're gonna be leaving tomorrow morning, afternoon, so I'll be gone tomorrow, being Monday.
Are you taking vacation again?
Good for you.
Have fun, enjoy it.
Alan's in charge, and you gotta list itself that long.
Okay, that's fine. But he's on, and he's on over the weekend if there's an emergency or whatever.
When I got the call on the signs this morning, uh, I went around and made a list, 'cause the, that was the first question that the state police asked me, is if I had a list. So I went around and made sure of what signs were uh taken, and I also indicated him that, that Alan was, to, I'd be gone for, you know, for a couple days throughout the weekend, so...
These signs, this question, these signs are aluminum?
They're aluminum, but I don't think any scrapyard would take them. They're letters, and you can't get them off. And even if you scrape them off with a razor blade, you scrape off some of the paint, and the sticky stuff still stays there. You can tell exactly what...
Well, I think as long as we're reporting it, we're doing, we're doing what we can and...
I called Al, I called Al first, and then uh, uh, I s, when I got the list, I sent Linda a copy, and I sent the uh state trooper a copy, but uh... Running signs cost? The letters, or there's...
Or, or what does a sign cost to get it made?
Depends on how many letters.
That's right.
Wow, oh, oh.
Altogether, the cost, there's three hundred and eight letters.
Yeah, a strong way of road would be one of the most expensive.
Right, oh, yeah. And that's, that's letter on both sides. There's two packages of...
We're spending money out there on air roads.
Can't we just call it Henry's Road?
Well, Barrington's, you got more letters.
So, we answered your question, so are we gonna start replacing them, the ones that are stolen, or what's the plan?
They already got uh seven, seven or eight of them made up already.
Okay.
But when you start running out of one letter, I mean, you could, I ordered...
We don't want any misspells.
Yeah.
No.
Gotta order a lot of vowels.
We gotta, we gotta, we got a good system for doing that. But anyway, I, I ordered a whole bunch of letters and sign blanks and stuff that I had to update, uh...
I may have to change the wooden signs.
So the answer is that, that they're not cheap.
They got the ones on uh Car, uh Carpenter Hill, they started over there first. West Carpenter Hill Road sign was gone three different times. And every private road down through there got the sign taken. Uh, they got a few ones skipper rerode, oh, there was a, there was a whole list.
Somebody's got them in their bedroom, hanging on a wall.
Uh, I think it's just uh, they're accumulating, there's only one thing I can think of, that, that they gotta either be melting the stuff down, 'cause that's the only way you're gonna get anybody to take it.
Or to just...
And it's no money, for no money.
You know, ra, raisin hack, you know?
There's so many of them.
But you'd find them somewhere. They eventually show up somewhere in a pile.
Yeah, well, usually one of this, it's a bunch of kids of...
The sign blanks are eight dollars and twenty-five cents a piece.
I've run into this problem already.